On, on the job.
I just put a motion on the floor to get a paper sent in from the county prosecutor, who's the highest legal opinion in the county.
Right.
And he should be able to give us a legal opinion whether or not your resignation stands or. That's why I addressed Ms. Sonic as the president in the last meeting, and I'll continue to address her that way in emails.
I am still the president of council. Precedent has been set repeatedly. Mr. Clement sits here having resigned and then resented and came back three days later, something like that. So you guys set the precedent for that, not me. And because Mr. Toy ruled that that was not a problem, that you could come back and continue being the council person.
You, you, you keep forgetting, it's not the same instance.
Oh, but it is.
No, it's not, because councils wouldn't have been able to continue because there wouldn't have been a quorum. So business would not have been able to continue at that point. So there is a distinction.
Well, it's still a precedent, so.
It's still a precedent.
Regardless of the distinction, I think it's still a precedent.
It's not the precedents to which you're trying to push, in my opinion.
The precedent is the precedent.
That's why I asked for a legal opinion.
Is that even brought up by Mr. Detroit?
It's, okay, this is not citizens' comments. So I, that's why I ask for a legal opinion. And so why don't we get that?
Well, here's what I suggest. These people here don't want to hear this. I think we should move on with business of this city.
Right.
I do.
If you do, then why wasn't the legislation on a month ago when it's already been through committee and discussed?
What legislation is that?
How about the one for our labor contracts, which were, should have been right at the last one? What about the ones for the Boto contract, which went through committee in January 16th? Why was that not in one of the last two meetings that we've had? And here we are, not taking care of city business. We've discussed this thoroughly in email for anybody who wants to have public records for the last week. And you even told Ms. Me that, oh yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna discuss it in committee on Wednesday. It's already been through committee, it's been discussed.
It's on Thursday.
On Thursday. Thank you.
Yes, and we are gonna discuss it because I don't believe it's been through committee.
Okay, we'll discuss it when we get to the ordinance. So we have a motion on the floor.
Right, and I also had some things to change to the minutes.
So on this part.
Wait, right. Can you say it out loud so we all can hear what you're saying?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Where she wrote, she's, she said, in all good conscience she could, and she could not rescind her resignation. Well, that's not what I said. I said, in all good conscience, I could not resign from council, because I would not want to let the folks that voted for me down. So it should say, in good conscience, I could not resign. It's very simple. And then here, and he might have said that, we didn't put like, no, yeah. And I'm not sure where he would put this and all of that. But Mr. Booth made a motion to excuse his own absence from the previous meeting, and then he voted to excuse himself. That needs to be added. And this might have already been done, I'm not sure.
Oh, yeah.
But had no quorum. And, and whatever he wants to omit, you know, that stays, because they walked out of the meeting while the meeting was still in progress.
That's gotta go up for vote. You don't get to unilaterally make that decision, that has to be up for vote.
Well, we can always watch the video from the last meeting, and we can see whether or not the meeting was still in progress or not.
And we can also see that a motion is second, we're on the floor.
Which you all voted stood up and walked out.
We didn't.
Anyway, we're gonna move on, we're going to move on.
We, we, we motioned as second, and we had to vote, we needed to vote, we were calling for the vote, you were the one saying.
We are moving on. Okay. The next section would be any comments from our citizens.
Excuse me, do we have the ability to accept the minutes?
I'm so sorry.
No, you're fine.
Motion to accept the minutes.
As amended or as read?
As amended.
Okay, good night.
Ms. Glenn?
Yes.
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so having approved the minutes, any comments from our citizens?
Yes, ma'am. I have some good news. Well, it all started with the Celtic dancers, sad enough. And they got me so excited, I decided, and I got a couple other people, Rita and the Chamber of Commerce is gonna try to get a grant for it. We've got new people coming into our city. Nikki Brooks has sold free houses, there's a new house across from me, there's one right down the street, and they need a welcome basket. I stopped along the way, I stopped at, well, I stopped at the fire department, I stopped at the police department, I stopped at Adventure Pro, I stopped at Stewart's Opera House, I stopped at the railroad station, and they were all very excited about doing this. They all gave me enough to fill six baskets, which we've got five people that are getting them, and we're not gonna just put them on their door. We're gonna find a time to present them to them and to tell them what a great city and fun things there are to do here. And I've gotten a couple more suggestions, we got these nice little maps tonight to put in them, I think those are great. And we're gonna start small, Jennifer LaRue is gonna make those little starboard magnets for us, which is really cool. And we're just gonna start knocking on doors and getting people excited about the good things that are happening in Nelsonville. And I moved here almost two years ago, I thought I'd never come back, but I gotta tell you, it's got, it's got a nice place to live, and I hope that the people moving in can feel the vibe that we feel. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
And if you've got any ideas, let me know.
Citizens, citizen?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we, do we just talk of mercy?
You can come to the podium.
I don't want to. I didn't definitely have to. The last time I was here, you stood up there, it doesn't matter to me.
I did because I have too much stuff.
That's okay, I like it, I do. I'm glad there's people out doing it, and leave everybody know, all the good stuff is happening.
If you would come to the podium, that would be great.
You want me to, oh, that's fine.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Just give your name and address.
Okay, Lynn Bishop, 1080 Borough Boulevard. I've, I've not been here for a while, but I've heard so much going on here. And I just wanted to come and see exactly how things work here. I think I can see a lot of how things work here, and I think you're gonna agree, John, Ms. President.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, and so, you know, I don't email, I don't Facebook, I don't do any of that, so I thought, rather, I wanna go to council and see what's happening myself. And I think I have, so we just wish you all the best and get this place moving.
Good deal.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other citizen having come to say what they'd like to make?
Yes, ma'am.
Alexa Ross, 716 Bobler. I was just wondering who this individual is.
This is Matthew, I'm sorry, him or him?
Him.
My name is Zach Hoffman, I'm a seventh grade student, council vice president, and also very middle school. Just going to watch and attend and see how council's doing.
We're glad you're here.
I've seen you had your eyes closed at one point, Zach. He will. I told him, don't duplicate what you say.
Anyone else? Okay. The next we would have, I think we have a business that wanted to speak and had a presentation to do. Witness Chris Acumis from AHRC, and Jane Forrest-Redford from AHSWD, if you would like to step forward.
Thank you all so much for inviting us to be here. My name is Chris Acumis, I live at 15600 Henry Road in Amesville, Ohio. So, and I am the executive director of Athens Hocking Recycling. We are primarily here because Jane is gonna be doing a presentation about the council of governments. If that's formed, the nonprofit Athens Hocking Recycling, all of the operations will transfer from the nonprofit back to a governmental agency, which is the council of government. So we used to be part of the solid waste district. The operations went from the nonprofit supporting the solid waste district in 2014. So, but I wanted to, and Jane is primarily leading, they have to size them with the council of governments. But I also wanted to bring up with council that there are now 20 days until the contract for trash and recycling expires, and the bids must legally appear in the local paper at least two weeks, per Ohio Revised Code 735.05. I'm extremely concerned that Nelsonville is gonna be without trash and recycling services as of April 1st. The current Nelsonville refuse and recycling contract, and I have a copy of it here, that's the signed one that I can submit for the record, has as section 1.5, the period of contract, that the contract shall be for three years. And it gives the dates that it's gonna expire, which is March 31st, 2024. And then it says, the city reserves the right as its sole option to extend the contract with the same conditions and prices for a period not to exceed 90 days beyond the expiration date for the contractor hereby agrees thereto. The city also reserves the right to waive bidding and to negotiate a new two-year contract with the selected hauler at the completion of said term. So I started looking for the Nelsonville bid back in October, because typically those go out about six months before a contract ends. Mid-January, I sent an email to Mr. Panjemi, Mr. Flowers, and Mr. Taylor, offering the extension, because I was already starting to get nervous about what was gonna be happening with the city of Nelsonville contract. Mr. Panjemi responded and asked for more details, like what would a contract extension look like, and I provided that with him, for him, and also a copy of the OU extension letter that had just came as an example. I'm aware that council then asked for it to go out to bid, but it hasn't been. And so I just, I'm very concerned that Nelsonville's gonna be left without trash and recycling services. And we currently pick up about 35,000 pounds of recycling every week and 83,000 pounds of trash every week. So without service, it's gonna become a public health concern really quickly. So regardless of what you all decide to do, I'm really hoping that you make some concrete steps towards making sure there's a concrete, a contract in play. I'm hoping you'll extend it, I'm hoping that you'll consider joining the council of governments, because I think it's what's great for the region. But regardless, I'm a little bit worried that we're kind of caught up in some of the craziness going on in Nelsonville right now, and I just want you all to know that that is not at all, like, I'm not trying to be part of that. I'm just trying to offer solutions.
I understand.
Yeah. So, and then I'm gonna turn this over to.
Could I ask you a question?
Oh, sure.
The contract you have, was that, was that negotiated with our city manager?
Not Mr. Panjemi, but a prior, so, so Mr.
Who's put out the bids?
Yeah, so Mr. Frank would have put it out to bid, it wouldn't have been negotiated with us, we just would have bid on it.
But that was the first contract, right, right?
Yeah.
The one that's coming up.
But, but this one you have, is, is that?
This, this is a copy of the current contract, of that one.
Okay, okay.
And then if you would like, I have a sample letter of what extensions look like. I also, the extension contract offer that we made, I have a copy of that.
If we could get that, that would be wonderful, because as you said, we have 20 days, despite the fact that we passed an ordinance some time ago asking Mr. Panjemi to put forth for bids. And since he is gone for the next 45 days, then, yeah, it's great to see what.
So can I give an email, copies of all that out to everybody, if that would be helpful?
Thank you, ma'am.
I'm gonna turn it over to Jane for Nelsonville.
So my call. Good evening, I'm Jane Forrest-Redford, and I'm the director of the Athens Hocking Solid Waste District. My office is right down the street at 1121 Chestnut Street. So this is my work home. I appreciate Nelsonville. Mr. Scott, when he served as city manager, was on my policy committee to develop the 15-year solid waste management plan. And since then, we have filled it with someone else, but I would like to entertain that maybe in the future, having someone from Nelsonville be part of the policy committee. As you all know, the solid waste district basically is made up of the board, of a board, and it's governed by the three county commissioners of Athens and the three of Hocking County. We had a meeting this morning over at the Foundation for Appalachian Ohio, right here in Nelsonville. I have a policy committee that helps guide my actions, and the responsibility is to provide a place for garbage for 15 years, and to at least recycle 25% of the waste in our district. We, over the last few years, have been around 27%. That doesn't count all of the stuff that's reused and repaired and prevented. But we're well above many of our neighbors in recycling, so we're doing a great job. Over the last year and a half, I've been working with the policy committee, had many presentations by lots of organizations throughout the region to talk about, what do we do if there's an emergency? What are the future, what's the future of composting? What's the future of recycling? And all of that information, as, as well as forecasting, went into an over 300-page document that I submitted in, in December, or was it, no, it was November, to the Ohio EPA. They reviewed it, and it basically will raise rates at the landfill and any garbage generated. But it basically, those funds then come back to the district to promote recycling. As many of you remember, we have household hazardous waste collection days at Hocking College, we have recycle days in Athens and throughout the district. We are having six tire collection days over the next three months. Since I've been on board for the last two years, we've collected 12 semi trucks full of tires. And so we're really working to clean up the district and to increase recycling as much as possible. As Chris has said, the district and recycling have gone hand in hand, in that we were here to kind of promote and grow recycling in, originally in the city of Athens, the first city in the state to start curbside. And then it expanded to, in 1998, to drop-offs and other events. And Nelsonville, thank you for doing curbside as well, because you two are the only two cities in the district that do curbside recycling. The Athens Hocking Recycling has about 1,700 customers throughout Athens, Albany, Amesville, and near Logan in this area that have curbside, because there's subscription. But otherwise, no other hauler provides curbside recycling, up until when Rumpy got the contract and they were contracted to do recycling. So with, with the district, our responsibility is to make sure that we have the infrastructure and the potential to be able to recycle. And over the last 40 years, we've built up the Athens Hocking Recycling Center, the district was married to this recycling center, until my board decided to vote out at the recycling center and let them go in the room. But with the loss of the contract, it kind of has woken up everybody to the fact that we don't have any control now of our destiny in recycling. You know, we will have to pay if Athens Hocking Recycling goes away. We will have to pay whatever the cost is for recycling, whether at my 22 drop-offs throughout the district, where people drop off recycling for free, or, you know, having recycling days like we used to do, or have a trailer going to different communities on different weeks. I don't wanna go there. I didn't get this job, I didn't take this job so I can go backwards. I wanna move forward. So one thing that we've been doing a lot lately in our region is forming a council of governments. We did it for energy, not saying good or bad, but we did it for energy. We've done it for the Bailey's Trail, and many communities do it for other services. You all have a new, brand new wastewater treatment plant, maybe that's a possibility for that. But what we're suggesting is not going back to the model of the solid waste district and the six county commissioners controlling our solid waste and recycling, but to go forward and have a council of governments where the, the individual organizations and citizens of the council of governments decide which way we're going for solid waste, recycling, compost, household hazardous waste, tire cleanups, all of these different things that we have, that we could be doing. This is important. We have a lot of emergencies, we have a lot of disasters in our area, we had a tornado just south of here. You know, we've had ice storms, all of that. We need emergency services, we need equipment, we need things to be able to work together to make happen. And through, by working together, we can do that. So currently, what we're trying, working to do is to form a council of governments, it only takes two entities. And this week, the village of Amesville will join the Athens Hocking Solid Waste District to become the second government to join as a COG. Legally, we can join, we can form a COG, and that, if that's all the governments we have, we will move forward. But we wanted to, obviously, the city of Athens, Athens Township, in, here. The city of Logan is in discussions, and we hope that the city of Nelsonville will join us. Any jurisdiction, any of the 41 jurisdictions within my district can join. It's very simple. Once we get a set of bylaws, which you all know about those, and then agreement with the parties, we can then file with the auditor's office at the state and form a council of governments. At that time, all of the assets of Athens Hocking Recycling, including the operations, the labor, the, the union, you know, all of the paid off equipment, transfers over to the council of governments, and then we operate as a government. We provide, we would provide basic services, solid waste, trash pickup, recycling, electronics recycling, composting, and we would move forward with planning for the future as a council of governments. It will only cost $500 per jurisdiction, and that's just paperwork, you know, dealing with that. But as we move forward, you know, the, each jurisdiction will be charged what services you want. So for instance, Logan just wants curbside recycling, because they want their free enterprise going with, with their 10 haulers in the city. They could do that. If you guys just want your leaves picked up, or your Christmas trees picked up, then the COG could come. So the services would be at cost for the COG. We don't want profit in the future. We just wanna be able to serve our, our citizens for resiliency, so that we can react, we can be flexible and move forward. There's a cost savings from the nonprofit to government, they won't have to pay for such high liability insurance, because it would be a government insurance, as well as trucks, tags, highway tags. They save $30,000 performance fines, right now, that's $40,000 in their budget, that would be gone. We're not talking about adopting them, this would turn into the COG the very next day.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
When you're saying that would be saving all these things, and you were talking about the trash haulers, that are picking up our trash?
Our, the current Athens Hocking recycling system.
Okay.
It, when they turn into a council of governments, and they give all of their assets to the council of governments.
Right.
The expenses, the overhead for that operation are gonna go down.
Right, okay.
And so we'll be able to capitalize on those savings and being able to keep the, the cost to local governments like you, like the city of Nelsonville, to all of your residents down as much as possible.
I do have a question. And I don't know if this is correct, something I heard, that the, the dump, I guess, wherever you put the trash, was just bought over by Rumpy?
That's correct. Rumpy purchased it a year, year ago, it was final year of December.
Okay.
And they're a Ohio-born company. Their, their landfill is the second largest in the country, in Cincinnati. And they have plans to do a $100 million recycling plant in Columbus. I'm not, I don't have anything to say bad about Rumpy, but the experience of many communities is that once Rumpy is the only hauler, you turn into a monopoly and the, the prices go up. You all know about monopoly.
Right.
With the council of government, you would be in the driver's seat as a member of the board, so to speak.
Correct. Now, can you join this council at any particular time?
You can, but we want you all to be part of the beginning discussions, so that we can get your input in the development of the COG. As I said earlier, you are only one of two communities that have curbside recycling. Do we want more? Do we want more? We want your input.
Okay.
You know, do we want to take number five plastics? Do we want to take hard plastics? Do we want to have a place where people can bring their compost, you know, centrally, you know, um, electronics drop off at my office, whatever.
Right.
Um, so we want your input from the very beginning because right now, the way the bylaws are, one city is represented.
Right.
We want you to have a seat at the table as well.
Okay. Um, one more question. Um, how does Rumpke owning, um, the dump, uh, affect you guys? Are you then paying them to use it?
I don't, I don't pay Rumpke anything. They pay me fees.
Okay.
The solid waste district.
Okay.
The, the COG would have to pay landfill fees just like everybody else, um, to dump the garbage. It doesn't have anything to do with the COG. We don't have a landfill. No. So.
I was just trying to understand, if Rumpke owns the landfill.
Uh-huh.
And you need to have a place to put the trash you're collecting.
Right.
And you take the two same landfill that Rumpke owns?
Yes.
And they pay you?
No.
I thought that's what you just said. Yeah, I get you.
No, well, no, no, wait, timeout, timeout. They, they charge fees.
Okay.
And they have to pay the solid waste district in order for us to run the district and to promote recycling and implement programs.
Okay.
So they pay us the district fees. So we have the district, we have the Athens Hocking, and we have COG. It's kind of a little.
Athens Hocking, Krista's with Athens Hocking, and she pays Rumpke the dump.
Right.
Except for when we go to, um, other area landfills.
But I mean, so if she's dumping here, she's paying Rumpke though.
Right, so that was my question. If Rumpke owns the landfill and, uh, like she was saying, they pay Rumpke to be able to dump there.
Right.
But you guys do not pay Rumpke anything.
I don't collect. I don't collect any.
She's, she's not a hauler.
Yeah, I'm not a hauler. I'm a, I'm a planner. I'm a program person. I plan and implement programs for recycling and make sure that we have a landfill to dump in.
Okay.
So what I'm talking about are the operations of, of picking up recycling, picking up compost, composting the material, and getting it to markets for recycling. I'm talking about recycling.
Recycling.
So, so you will be a hauler once you take it in?
The COG, yes, the COG will adopt all of the operations.
And you will be a hauler?
So, the solid waste district and the COG would be a member of the council of governments?
Uh-huh.
But at least initially, I would be the executive director of the council of governments with a board made up of elected officials or city administrators.
But the council of governments consumes.
Yeah, so, so the council of governments would do the hauling.
Their equipment, their employees, their unions, I heard the same, right?
Yep, but it won't, won't adopt the debt. The debt will stay with the nonprofit Athens Hocking Recycling. And we will lease the mer, and the, and the operations there to, to be able to pay the mortgage.
And you'll be trash hauling along with?
Yep.
They'll be trash hauling along with?
And the idea is that we will also absorb, the COG will also absorb all of the contracts they currently have, which is Hocking College, Ohio University, you guys for another few weeks. Um, Ohio University signed for two years.
They signed for one, they have, they have, um, three one-year extensions left on their contract and they signed for one. So theirs is worded differently than yours' alls.
Yeah, I see that here on there.
And the solid waste district, you know, um, re-upped. Uh, I didn't want to go out to bid in the middle of the, the last few years because everything was so high. So I just went with the inch, you know, small, um, increases that they had, which is something I would probably recommend all of you doing. Because if you go out to bid now, you don't know what you're going to get with the high gas prices. Have no idea where the economy is going to go.
So we can do an extension, but it doesn't have to be a three-year contract?
Correct.
I mean, the way this is phrased, it has to be a two-year contract based on the, on the language in your current contract. So if. I mean, if you decide to send it out to contract, you might want to rethink working that language because that is, I was surprised the way that your contract was worded. Um, because most contract extensions give you the option of like three one-year extensions, or in your case, two one-year extensions, but yours is specifically worded as a two-year extension without much wiggle room.
Yeah.
What's the ninety days?
Um, the ninety days is a giving notice. I think, I don't know, I read, I read it without, that wasn't the relevant part of what I read.
You said, I thought we could sign an extension for ninety days.
Probably negotiate anything at this point. Um, so, uh, to come back around, um, the council of governments basically is our way, the district's way of preserving the forty years of infrastructure that we've built in order to get to that twenty-five percent recycling rate. Um, if Athens Hocking goes away, it's really going to limit our ability to be able to do the kinds of programming that we have. Um, right now. Um, the, the money for the district is very, very tight, um, and, um, you know, but I'm a really good fundraiser. Uh, and so, you know, the thing is, is that we as a council of governments could do a lot in the future to help all of the communities because our main mission will not be profit, but it will be our citizens and the resiliency of our communities. Um, and as every day goes on, recycling, material, um, recovery, I mean, they're having a cardboard crisis right now. Um, and it's really, really important that we move forward in, in recycling and keeping that infrastructure. Otherwise, we're going to be turning back the clock. So we welcome a member of council and a city manager to join the groups. Uh, the various governments next week at a, a planning meeting where we're going to work on the agreement and the bylaws so that we can move forward with the COG. And we really value your opinions and we would really like you at the table.
Where is that?
Um, I prefer not to say.
So you don't want me there?
Well, I will tell you, I will tell whoever's planning to come.
Okay, sure.
Yeah, it's not, you know, it's not a public meeting, so it doesn't have to be.
I got you. No, I got you. Thank you.
But I'm more than happy to pass it along to whoever. Who should I?
Well, you can, uh, send it to all the council members and, uh, that's, that's, uh, city email, so we're known as we're supposed to see it.
Okay.
And that way, anyone who, uh, decides they have the time at that particular time, they can schedule it and they can be there.
And the city manager, of course, send it, you know.
Okay.
You know, Tom, I saw you talking with the library and then.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is he going to be on the board?
Sir?
Is he going to be on your board?
On my policy committee?
Your board, yeah.
Uh, no, my board are county commissioners.
Yeah.
And my policy committee is full right now, but, um, in the future, we can add anyone from the district. We have one spot to fill.
Um, I'll tell you what, send it to, um, Ms. Harmony, our council clerk. Council clerk.
And you'll let me know who's coming?
Yeah, I can try to do that.
That would, that would be awesome.
Show us something.
You ain't got nothing to do, do you?
Yeah, but this is council clerk at City of Nelsonville. I'm going to distribute it and I give action.
Yeah, and you're already franchised, so you could then jump on board and, and be able to provide all of your citizens services right away. You wouldn't have to go out to bid every two years or whatever. Um, you would have say on what the cost was and, and how it's implemented and what we're doing in the future. So it's, it's really an opportunity for us to continue building what we have. Um, and not just letting forty years of infrastructure and experience and, um, uh, with everything. So thank you for having me. I'm more than, I'm just right down the street next to Domino's in the strip. If you see my white truck, my little blue car, that's where my office is. Stop by anytime. Yeah, stop by and, um, anytime and get more mats or, um, you know, if you have any questions.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
We'd love to watch you.
Thank you, thank you. I forgot one thing. Plus, if you do, all these gentlemen back here in the back will still have jobs.
Yes, these are all, um.
They came tonight.
Jobs, um, they've worked at the recycling center for some, some of them for how many years?
Two years and none.
What about you? Three, how many?
These, these folks could, some of them could be making a lot more driving trucks with their CDL license somewhere else. They're committed to our community. They live here and, um, you know, I, I would hope that you would support, um, them in, in their support.
Quick question, if you don't mind, uh, approximately, how many of your employees are, are citizens of Nelsonville?
Uh, I think only four are citizens of Nelsonville, but yeah, two of them are here.
I technically live in Nelsonville.
Oh, do you? Okay. It's more than four then.
Okay, so five. Okay, thank you.
So, if I may, Mr. Ken Jimmy's still on the line. Does he have anything to add to this?
I sure do. Basically, that is my city report. I wanted to basically give my time to, uh, Chrissy and Jane to be able to, uh, offer that information to council. I've been trying to discuss that for quite some time and they volunteered to come and do that. And I want to thank them dearly for that. I truly believe this is the way to go. That's why the resolution has been written up, so I have the ability to negotiate with them, get on board with it, and move forward. That's all I have to say about that.
Thank you. Thanks, Tom.
Well, uh, Mr. Ken Jimmy, the only thing I can say about that is that you omitted me from the emails that contained all that information, so I did not receive it. Um, okay, any department updates at this point?
The only update I have to police and fire.
That's right, update, sorry.
Is that right?
Yeah, come here.
Am I, is my microphone on?
Yeah.
The only update I have is the police and fire, the, uh, I call the police and fire meeting for, uh, March the fourteenth. I'm having a meeting at ten AM in the morning. And I, I'd invite anybody that wants to talk about police and fire to come to that meeting. Um, uh, we're going to be, the agenda is out. I don't have a copy of it right now, but it's going to, it's going to talk about the ATV. We're going to take a look at that. The nine-one-one, I'm going to give a report on the nine-one-one progress that I'm making. Uh, I also have a, uh, meeting with Teresa at nine-one-one on March the eighteenth. She's going to take me through the nine-one-one center in Athens and possibly take me to the new nine-one-one center. So we'll take a look at that. And, uh, and then some other, other cool things, city stuff, uh, it's going to be on the agenda, uh. So I invite all the citizens to come and, uh, voice your opinions, concerns, acclimates, I hope.
Any other, I know there's, I know there are no other committee meetings, um, that have happened. We might be having a finance committee coming up, but it will be announced once we, uh, make that decision. Any department updates?
Yeah, I've got the code update as well. Um, from the last code report, there have been sixty-nine riddled permits issued for a hundred and sixteen units total. Fifteen other miscellaneous permits issued. Uh, total revenue from here of thirty-one thousand dollars, seven, thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars. And then Bill is also working with the land bank and they're looking at having about eight homes demolished hopefully by April.
Wow.
Eight homes that are being demolished. So he gave you for that. Then for the police department, for the month of February, we had three hundred and sixty-eight calls for service, fifty-seven traffic stops, twenty-two traffic citations, seven parking citations, issued ten trespasses, responded to five traffic crashes, made thirty criminal arrests, uh, fourteen warrant arrests. We've also had four officers attend illegally competent and tactically competent clients hosted by the, uh, city of Lancaster along with the Fairbanks County Sheriff's Office. And then I also need to ask that we make sure we get the ordinance to adopt the contract for police services book that we'll add to the union agreement.
It is. I did add. Can I ask you a question? Uh, on the reports, uh, being newbie, um, on the call status, closed, does that mean?
Like the investigation's complete?
Complete?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I noticed a lot of the same street numbers on the paper. Is that pretty consistent?
Yeah.
Yeah, is it? Okay, all right. Thank you.
You gave a report on the rental property to pay their share. Is there any report on how many has not paid?
I don't know. I don't have what, uh, he'll drop off.
Um, I do have a question. Um, at the last meeting, um, Ms. Stephanie McManaway, and I'm probably butchering it. I'm sorry about that.
I think that's right.
Is it?
Yeah, I believe so.
Related an incident, uh, have you had an opportunity to talk to her?
I haven't spoken with her. However, I've talked to both the city solicitor and the prosecutor, county prosecutor's office. And, uh, the charges were coming back with, with people like Jay walking and unfortunately to the.
You mean they're charging the people that got hit?
Oh.
They're not getting charged.
Well, that, yeah.
Going forward, there's any charges, however, they were crossing, not on the crosswalk, across the street.
Okay. Thank you.
I thought the hidden brother came back. I mean, did they, no charges against that person?
Uh, no, because they were making a legal attorney. The people crossing, I'm sure you will not cross any.
When you say, um, you said you spoke to the city attorney?
The city solicitor.
So he's, who is that?
Jim Marcus McCarty, handles prosecution for misdemeanor cases in municipal court.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. All right, uh, any other department updates?
Yeah, so it's not my regular night's update, but, um, so I've got the recommendations for filling this position. And this has been approved by the city manager as well. Um, he's here remotely tonight. I'm going to read the letter. Recommend the current, the current part-time firefighter, Brian Atterly, to hire to fill the full-time firefighter positions at Nelsonville Fire. Firefighter Atterly has the required certification for the position, a full-time firefighter, and is currently facing national entry for EMT. Because this position is being filled in-house, he will serve a six-month probation period. And this position will be filled as soon as all the highest police and fire pension testing funds, uh, is completed. So basically, I make the recommendation to the city manager. He approves it, we give it to council, council approves it, and then we still go through the testing process for high placement fire pension. So I've got two of them. I've got that one. And I also recommend that current volunteer firefighter, Sam Kopp, will be moved from the volunteer firefighter roster to an open part-time firefighter position. He surpasses all minimum requirements for the position. This would be a provisional appointment. Which means they usually don't run past six months when they're based on the results of the test. Um, we do not have civil service commission as all we all know, but I still interview physicians. If I get these two, uh, people moved in these positions, that would still lead me to open part-time positions right now. So we'll be in a lot better shape compared to.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
So Tom and I, the same editor, I have made this recommendation, we can council it through.
Tom, are you there?
Yes, I am.
And uh, so uh, Mr. Chief Arbor just uh recommended those individuals um for those positions, and you concur with that?
I do. I asked him to read it there in my absence, and uh, yeah, I do agree.
Okay. I'll motion that uh we accept uh the Chief Arbor and uh city manager's recommendation of uh moving that part-time firefighter to full-time and uh the um, I'll volunteer to part-time.
I'll second.
And if you could just get the, those names to the clerk, so I'll have them for the minute.
Okay, um, let's see, Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Doos?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Um, okay, so the next uh order of business is the second reading of the ordinance.
I'll have it.
Related to the employees' health insurance.
Before we start the ordinance, does that like go ahead and add that to add ordinance this?
Um.
Okay, ordinance twenty-one, twenty-four, twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-four, and the resolution that I don't see a number attached to. But it says resolution. I'll second that motion.
Did we have those?
Who wrote these?
Who wrote these? Good question.
They were written by an attorney, they were written by an attorney, they were submitted to the clerk many days ago, be on the agenda.
And who's the attorney?
Jonathan Roe.
Uh, Jonathan Roe is not the city attorney.
Yeah, I can hire any attorney every thirty days that I need to, and you understand that.
No, sir, that is not the way it works. We had already voted.
Yes, ma'am, that is the way it works.
And it was written by, regardless who it was written by, the attorney.
Mr. Church, this, this same resolution was used for the ORCA resolution, it's just the same resolution, and only, it's only different in the name.
That's fine, go ahead and um.
Give it to Jane.
Hold on, give it to Jane.
Well, only because Mr. Ken Jimmy never sent me that. I know he sent it to y'all, but I never got it. Um, so we're gonna vote on uh amending the agenda. So go ahead and give it.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
No. Flower?
Yeah.
So we have actually a majority.
Point of order.
Uh, no.
Proper rules of order. Please read proper rules of order. A majority vote in a forum is enough to do business. And I'll give you a copy.
I have it, thank you.
I'll take the copy, yours, sir.
I've got the definition of uh majority on there as well. From Black's Legal, which, yeah.
So, I've got a question. So are you not wanting to have the fire department and the service department be able to get their contract uh raises that were?
No, that is not at all.
Well, it appears that way.
Uh, to you possibly.
Well, I mean, we've discussed this uh since you've been, since you've been elected, right? It has been discussed multiple times, including executive session, when the city manager has a process of how the negotiation has been going. The figures and the percentages have been discussed, you've been aware of this.
Yes.
So then, we're not, you're not uh, you don't wanna?
Uh, no, let me explain, if I may.
Sure.
Wait, excuse me, I'm not even a citizen of the county, but can I speak?
Yes, of course, please.
Robert, Robert's rules of order have nothing to do with whether you can vote on this. You have to look into the charter.
Correct.
And I assume you've looked at the charter and understand what that says, correct? I, I'm assuming, as a council member. So what does it say?
Please tell me, we seem to be.
Four votes. Four votes, according to the charter.
Or, or an ordinance, not a motion.
To amend the agenda.
For a motion to amend the agenda. Majority votes.
To amend the agenda.
Agenda is not an ordinance.
The charter says.
What, what section?
Four votes to amend the agenda.
Section is that.
Well, you've had the charter longer than me, couldn't tell you off the top of my head, but I know it's there because I read it there.
So you make a motion, it takes a majority vote, not four votes. Four votes is fast forward.
It takes four votes to amend the agenda.
Well, I'm sorry, are we talking, I, I, I got confused. You're talking about amending it?
Correct.
Or to pass it?
Yeah, to amend the agenda.
To amend the agenda, yeah, you can do that by Robert's rules of order, I apologize. That's my fault, I apologize. That's my fault.
Appreciate that.
Yes. I thought you were talking about actually passing the.
No, 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 it, it clearly does.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
So.
That's my fault, I apologize.
That's okay.
Don't worry, you're, you're smarter about this stuff than I am.
I'm smarter than anybody.
Or did we already?
We already did. So the updates are all on the agenda now.
Sure. So let's go.
Let's do this. Excuse me, I don't have any of them, because.
Uh, the clerk has provided on all council members.
I thought that was gonna be uh the next. So we are going to do the second reading on, in ordinance, uh, that we did first reading at the last.
And ordinance adopting review, section one twenty-five premium only plan documented ten twenty-four, two thousand twenty-three, authorizing its signing, whereas the city desires to renew and update its longstanding section one twenty-five premium only plan document to keep compliance with changing state and federal laws and compliance. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, that the city council authorizes and ados as approved the section one twenty-five premium only plan, dated October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three, and is attached here to as of today. This ordinance shall be effective at the earliest date permitted by law, duly enacted by council on second reading the eleventh day of March, two thousand twenty-four.
Any discussions?
Move through, uh, second.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Doos?
Yes.
Are you doing twenty-one, point of order?
Yes.
Our next ordinance is regarding labor contracts. Somebody like to introduce it?
I'll introduce it.
And ordinance adopting labor contracts with fire, with fire department workers and declaring an emergency, whereas labor agreements have been reached with the fire department workers. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The labor agreement with the fire department workers effective January first, two thousand twenty-four through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven, attached here to and incorporated here in my reference is adopted. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point three because the immediate passage of the ordinance is necessary because the contract is retroactive to January first, two thousand twenty-four and shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Duly enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules, the eleventh day of March, two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you.
Any discussion?
I have one question.
Yep.
Um, this, Mr. Jimmy? Yo.
Yes, Mr. Flowers.
Um, in this contract, uh, did, uh, is there anything in this contract that, that was different than the other contracts that you had with the other union?
Uh, no, not, none of the language has significantly changed in any of the contracts. The only thing that was changed was the rate of pay, uh, fifteen percent total over three years, eight percent the first year, four percent the second year, and four percent the third year. That is it, sir.
That's good, that's good. Did you add anything in there about vehicles? No?
I'm sorry, repeat, repeat that again?
Never mind.
Mr. Ken Jimmy, is it possible for us to get the contract to look at? You have one?
I'm sorry, repeat that, Miss Lynn.
Uh, that's okay, this gentleman is kind enough to have a contract with him that we can use. Okay, so let's see, this was. But first, we need to uh do a motion to see if we want to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend. Second that.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
No.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Doos?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
I think we've got the first reading then, right? Six members. Boxer emergency, yeah.
And we got five. Three, oh, we got four. Yeah, you're right, you're right.
Well, it'll just go to second reading. Alright, and in the meantime, we will.
I have a question, I have a question.
I'm speaking, sir.
Why, why would you not want your employees of the city to get paid?
Once again, I'm speaking, if you will allow me, that would have been answered.
Okay, please.
Oh, come on, Jane. This is, you, you come on.
As I was saying.
Look at these people here, they're not here listening to you.
Look, look at the employees, have some respect for the employees.
Once again, as I was saying, that will also give us time to look at the contract before we vote it in. I know you, for you is something different, but I do not believe that in order for me to serve the citizens' will of this city, I'm to just vote on everything without having a clue what's in the contract.
You actually.
And I will not do that.
You actually had the ability to do that a month ago, fast forward.
You, nobody gave me the contract. In fact, I was just asking Mr. Ken Jimmy for it.
Okay.
At any rate, it doesn't matter.
Are you the representative for the union?
Yeah.
Okay, so um, if she reviews this contract, say, before the next meeting, is there anything that a council member can do to change that contract from, so, so the contract is set?
We, we, yeah, we've negotiated in good faith with the city.
Yeah.
We've had multiple meetings, um, we bear proposals, we use counter proposals and reached the tenement agreement act on January, and we have been patiently waiting. And I also believe that this contract is a fair, very fair contract by our membership, our membership voted on it, and we're really kinda discouraged that it's still sitting here.
I would agree.
This contract, I've represented the city now, or, and live in the city. Moral contracts, and I never went this far, and I have a membership that is ready to, um, they're very upset. These guys have said they're quit, taking calls, um, a lot of stuff could happen, there, this should not be happening. This con, there's no, there's no added change, like Tom said, you're exactly right. I'm fine, I will, I emailed a copy to them months ago.
Uh, and the reason that it has not progressed is because Mr. Ken Jimmy has been holding on to.
That's not true, that's not true. So at any point, did you ask for the contract when you knew that this was coming forward? Did you ask for it, or did you wait for it?
I have asked for a contract.
When? When did you ask?
You know what, I'm not doing this with you.
I'm, I'm just.
At any rate, sir, I appreciate, I appreciate that.
There's no, there's no.
And uh, if need be.
It puts a little bit, the waiting for your employees is, it should not be, it should not happen.
There's no impact that we can have on that contract.
I understand, and if need be, uh, we will call a special meeting to make sure that these are passed so that everyone that needs to look at the contract or even cares to look at it, uh, can do so. I would have loved to have looked at it back in January when you said you completed it.
Glad to get it.
But I, I did not know.
Rita, just to, you know, what John said, my guys have already told me if this does not get passed, they would not come in for weeks, anything to happen, you know, like. So if something happens like, let's say, it happened on Jefferson Street last year or during the trainings.
Okay, first of all, it is, I understand. I understand that, and I haven't said we're not passing it. I have not said that.
They told me it wouldn't pass tonight.
Well, you know what, they're employees of the city, and it's not up to them to decide what calls they want to attend to for the city. At any rate, thank you, sir. Okay, uh, the next one is it was twenty-one.
I'll introduce it. You're welcome.
And ordinance adopting labor contracts with service workers and declaring an emergency, whereas labor agreements have been reached with the service worker. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The labor agreement with the service workers effective January first, two thousand twenty-four through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven, attached here to and incorporated here by reference is adopted. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point three because the immediate passage of the ordinance is necessary because the contract is retroactive to January first, two thousand twenty-four and shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption, duly enacted by council. On first reading of suspension of the rule, the eleventh day of March.
My question, do you also have this company? If I can get a copy, that would be great.
Alright.
Okay, thank you. And I'll do the best I can to get it taken care of as quickly as we can. Um, so then this one, we would have to vote to suspend the rules if that is.
So moved, second.
Okay, whenever you're ready, I'll try. Yeah, I mean, take your time. This way. No. Mr. Flowers?
About to suspend the rules?
Yes.
But adopted tonight? Right, right? Well, I'm gonna have to go with the fire department, yeah.
Well, this is, right now, the vote is just whether or not you want to suspend the rules.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Doos?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
So, this ordinance twenty-two, twenty-four is not for the fire department, it is, as you read, labor contracts with the service workers. Um, so, motion? No, you need to.
Suspension failed.
Right, okay, great. So I'll go to second, go to second.
So, I have a question. This um, this would have went through the utility committee, correct? This contract, if there'd have been a committee?
Uh.
Finance committee.
Finance committee.
It would have been through finance.
And how many times has the finance committee met, and how many times has it been discussed?
Finance committee approved, the finance committee approved.
They did. President, Mr. Smith was sitting right there, you were sitting there, and then Sonic was sitting there. You approved all of these contracts to go through.
Well, at any rate, it did not pass, uh, for the suspension.
Made a point, that's all.
Um, the next one is like. Okay, so anybody want to?
I'll introduce it. I'll introduce it.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager Tom Congemmi and police chief Devin Tolliver to enter into a contract with the village of Bokel.
Talking, we can't hear you. The microphone's right there, right there. In a very sensitive, you talk amongst yourselves, people home can't hear you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, go ahead.
An ordinance authorizing city manager Tom Congemmi and police chief Devin Tolliver to enter into a contract with the village of Bokel for the Nelsonville Police Department to provide police services and mutual aid to the village of Bokel in declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville desires to enter into a contract with the village of Bokel to provide Bokel with police services and mutual aid for the calendar years of two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-five. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. City manager Tom Congemmi and police chief Devin Tolliver shall have the authority to enter into a contract with the village of Bokel for the Nelsonville Police Department to provide the village of Bokel with police services and mutual aid. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point thirty because the immediate passage of the ordinance is necessary to avoid disruption of services from the Nelsonville Police Department to the neighboring village of Bokel, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. duly enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules to the eleventh day of March.
Alright, so, are we, need to make a motion to suspend the rules so we can vote on that?
So moved, second.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Miss Wayne?
Yes.
Motion to adopt, second.
Is there the last one? Of the ones that we just put in?
I have the resolution.
We have to make, we have to vote on the motion to pass it. The one.
Yeah, we have to do that first. Have to vote. Uh, Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Mr. Wayne?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yeah.
Here's the contract for the Bokel. Just whenever, okay, it's fine. I have an issue with the wording of this resolution, one. And two, again, this was not sent to me. Mr. Congemmi omitted me from that particular email.
Point of order, we haven't opened up council discussion on this item yet, it hasn't even been read.
Thank you, Paul.
You're welcome.
You can read it whenever you want. Oh, that one's yours, I'm sorry, I didn't. Okay.
Resolution, oh, someone liked the introduction.
I will.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to negotiate an agreement establishing a regional council of government, namely the Southeast Ohio Area Resources Council of Governments for the purpose of providing public waste management services. Whereas chapter six or seven of the revised code authorizes certain political subdivisions in our government entities to enter into an agreement establishing a regional council of government for the purposes of providing certain public services on a cooperative basis. Whereas public waste management services, service is a public service appropriate for a COG. Whereas the Board of Athens Hocking Solid Waste District by its board resolution two thousand twenty-four dash one has elected to be a founding member of a regional council of government with the full purpose on a regional scale to implement solid waste collection, refuse recycling process, testing, and safe disposal related to solid waste landfill diversion while creating a more circular economy in order to create a cleaner, safer, and better place to live in the southeast Ohio and is seeking to enter into a COG agreement with other government entities. Whereas, the Nelsonville City Council now desires to grant the city manager authority to negotiate a COG agreement with the Athens Hocking Solid Waste District and other regional government entities for the purpose of providing regional waste management services, including to residents of the city of Nelsonville. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The city manager is hereby authorized to negotiate with the Athens Hocking Solid Waste District and other regional government entities to enter into a COG agreement for the purposes of providing regional waste management services, including to residents of the city of Nelsonville, provided that any negotiated COG agreement shall not be materially adverse to the interests of the city of Nelsonville, which determination shall be made by the city manager. The city manager has full authority to withdraw from any negotiations regarding the COG agreement if, at the sole discretion of the city manager, but after consultation with council, the city manager determines that any negotiated COG agreement is materially adverse to the interests of the city of Nelsonville. The city manager is therefore under no obligation to sign any COG agreement or any related agreement or certificates thereto. Nothing in this resolution shall be construed as authorizing the city manager to sign any negotiated COG agreement, nor shall anything in this resolution be construed as authorizing the city manager to join the city of Nelsonville as a member of any COG. Upon the city manager successfully negotiating a COG agreement, the city manager shall report the same to council and submit to its consideration separate legislation authorizing the city manager to sign the negotiated COG agreement. This resolution shall not financially obligate the city of Nelsonville to contribute to any COG unless and until such financial, financial contribution is approved by separate ordinance duly enacted by council. Council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions taken relative to the adoption of this resolution were taken in an open meeting of the Nelsonville City Council and that all deliberations of council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal actions, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance and applicable, with applicable legal requirements. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest moment permitted by law. duly enacted by council. This says second meeting, but it's only showing first meeting.
So it is the second.
Today or next time.
It's a resolution.
Yeah.
One rule, yep. So, discussion here?
Yes, discussion.
What does that mean?
I, I believe it means that he will sit on the agreement, but before they move forward, before he can move forward, he will bring it back
to council, yeah.
To the council to approve it.
But that has, that has nothing to do with what we're talking about with you, about
Correct.
two-week stuff, right?
Correct.
How do we address that? How do we address the fact that we're, we're gonna be short on picking up a hundred thousand gallons of trash?
One thing at a time.
Yeah, one thing at a time, right now.
You say I listen?
You did.
Didn't she say that can go on a ninety-day extension? If there's not.
So, we're losing money on that contract, and so we cannot agree for a ninety-day extension. So what we proposed is a four percent increase for the remainder of this year and a three percent increase for the year after that. And, and honestly, if we could, we would take the ninety day, but since we're already losing money, we really can't.
How about maybe a ninety day with the four percent?
Four, ten, fifteen bucks is what, forty cents?
Yeah, well, I think it's like fifty-three, but.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, the language in the current contract doesn't allow for that. The ninety-day extension specifically states that current rate. So you can do it with a rate increase for the two-year, but you can't for the ninety.
That's right.
No, this resolution allows, can't, Mr. Congemmi, and, I mean, hopefully, the council members will come to those meetings. But there is no resolution.
Yeah, so this, that resolution, I believe, I haven't seen it, but is for him to come to the meetings to negotiate, and then once we've come up with an agreement, he'll bring it back for you all to say yes, to join. And that's, that's wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Motion to adopt, second.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
So it did pass? It did, thank you.
You already did the city manager's reporter, or did you not?
I didn't, Mr. Congemmi, do you have a report?
I review this by time to Chrissy and Jane, and my department has covered everything else, thank you very much.
Um, any good in the order?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to interview a point you council members.
Second.
Whenever you're ready.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Miss Wayne?
No.
So it passes?
Yep.
Are we still under good of the order?
We are.
Okay, so, first off, I'd like to welcome the new business of town, the canal drive-through operated by Hunter Edwards.
Let's carry out, carry out, I'm sorry. Make it a drive-through, be drive-through.
I'm sorry, so, best of luck to a new business, that's great. The waste water treatment plant dedication was on February twenty-ninth, it was very well attended. And back to the trashing only contract, what is the plan to move forward to have this taken care of by the thirty-first of November?
Good question, is the utility committee gonna meet and discuss, or what would be?
We are gonna meet and discuss.
Within the next twenty days?
Well, the next council meeting, we need to have this resolved, or we're gonna pass the deadline.
Great, I wish I could have. I know what I've been taking care of had Mr. Congemmi followed the ordinance that was passed to get this, we would not be in this mess had he done what council asked him to do. Now, I do have something that's.
I have a comment on that, yeah.
Please.
Thank you. So, that was on January twenty-second, it was a seven to nothing vote for him to do that. However, Mr. Congemmi had other options for us to consider. One, the utility committee never met. Council leadership never listened to his ideas. There was no discussion between council and Mr. Congemmi to make this a productive solution. So now we're up against the deadline, and here we are. So, it was not on Mr. Congemmi, it was on our council leadership, thank you.
I think it was on our council, on our council leadership. You're on council?
Yeah.
I'm not on utility committee.
But you're on council.
Yes, and I brought it up.
You're on council for, for something that, that a committee didn't do.
So, on December eleventh, when new council took seat, I brought up that the contract was expiring March thirty-first, back in December.
I remember that.
And nothing was done.
I remember.
We're still up against the deadline. So, my question now is, how are we gonna resolve this? And to just say that we'll take care of it, what is the plan to take care of it?
I agree with that.
What is the plan?
I do. I agree with that completely, because we can't, we can't not have trucks sitting on the streets.
We have twenty days.
New York back in seventy.
So I would suggest if utility committee's gonna meet, it happens either this week, it shouldn't happen this week.
It'll happen this week.
It better happen this week.
Yeah, because I think we then, we talked about that, right?
Yes, we did.
Yes.
Are we all done so that I can have an opportunity to speak?
One last thing, Ms. Sonic is, Ms. Sonic is chairman of that committee, and she's been having some health issues. So, can we possibly discuss maybe temporarily putting someone else on that committee also?
You can have a committee meeting with only two members present.
You can.
So if Ms. Sonic is still ill, then we can still have the committee meeting, so I.
And then, we called for that meeting, and one of you two can't make it, this is a serious issue.
No, we'll.
I assure you, we will be there to take care of it.
Okay, because we've had a pretty, pretty lack of communication.
Well, it has not been on my part, sir, and I think everyone here knows that. At any rate, are we done?
You can have the floor, thank you.
Thank you very much. So, what I was going to say earlier when I was interrupted was that I do have something that I think is important for our town. Now, we have stated, you know, from the beginning, that we wanted to do things for our town, create events that would bring in tourists, I mean, folks from other surrounding cities so that we can help the businesses grow and also grow the community, so when people come, they can see, you know, this is a good place to live. I had an email that was sent to me by a company, which I thought was great. So, this is an outdoor cinema, it's called Sunset Cinema. So basically what they do is they set up an outdoor screening area wherever the city decides. It could be on the square, it could be by the library, whatever. So they provide everything, they provide the screen, the sound system, the seats. All we have to do is let the folks know that, hey, we're having an outdoor screening, and it's all the older films, it's not the newer films that should be PG thirteen but are not anymore. So it's not those. And, I think, this would be great to do in the summer when folks are on vacation with their kids, they are looking for stuff to do, and, you know, if they're coming into Hocking College and looking for something else, this would be a great event for them to come, bring them into our city to be a part of our city, plus, as well as that, is our citizens. It would be great as a way to build community for our citizens, to come together, and it can be done as often as the city wants it to be done. The cost, what he put in here, he also said he could take off additional, I think it was like twenty-five percent, yeah, twenty-five percent discount on each movie, so, what I, I wanted to share that with everyone, and I'm going to pass this along to the Parks and Recreation Committee to do the lead work, you know, speak with him, figure out what we need to do to get it done, and, you know, negotiate at good price. It seems to me this gentleman is very much willing to negotiate.
Would that be on us to pay for it?
The city would have to pay. Unless, you know, businesses were willing to donate for the cause, you know, but, yes, the city would have to pay. Um, so that is what I have for the good of the cost.
How much was it, really?
I, I don't have like, uh, a number. So he said, uh, like nine hundred dollars, but also taking off twenty-five percent. And that's not a figure. That's just like a general estimate, uh, per setup.
Is this a local company or somewhere out of town?
No, it's local.
Oh, it's local?
Mm-hmm.
Did you send an email?
His name is Anthony. It's Sunset Cinema. So I, uh, will run copies as soon as we're done, and I will get it to the committee, so you can take over.
Very good.
I also would like to say, are you done?
Yes, yes, yes.
I also would like to, to challenge the, uh, council. I would also like to challenge the council to make a donation to the, uh.
Tunnel to Tower.
The, yeah, yeah. Say it again?
Tunnel to Tower.
Towers to Towers.
Tunnel to Towers.
Tunnel to Towers.
Tunnels to Towers. I know the cause, and it's a wonderful cause. And I would like to at least kind of challenge the council to make a donation to that. And I would start the donation at a hundred dollars. And I encourage every council member, just maybe think, dig in their pocket. If folks would like to contribute, we can take a contribu- uh, contribution for that.
What's your call again?
Tunnels to Ta-
Tunnel to Towers.
Yeah, tunnels to Towers. It's, it's, it's the, it's the organization that, uh, when people, you got it?
I did.
Yeah.
Here's the welcome basket. Do you want to see this?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, they buy homes, they buy homes for, uh, for veterans or fire, uh, fire, firemen.
First responders.
Yeah. Yeah, first responders, and they actually did something here in Nelsonville for, for our firefighter. I'm sorry.
This is the third. This is coming up, the third year.
Third year, yeah. I remember when Old Harry ran with them. What you have on your back, Harry?
No. We run up there, thanks.
Air tank, yeah.
Yes, we're still in good to, somebody else have something?
I'm good. I, I was gonna, uh, I do have something. Um, I just wanted to apologize to the fire department and the service department for, um, the fact that we, as councils, could not get past the contract. It's, it's pretty disheartening to say the least. Uh, I'm really disappointed. I think that council has had every opportunity to discuss, to review, and to ask for such contracts, if any council member wanted to see it, which was all discussed with every single council member, including one that used to reside here and is, uh, now gone. So it's been discussed for that long. Um, so I just, I just want the service department and fire department to realize that this is not everyone on council. And, uh, I'm sorry that it didn't pass, and I'm sorry that, uh, it's not gonna go into effect. And, and I know that, uh, you've spent, you know, a lot of time on this contract. I know Mr. Ken Jemmy has as well. I'm just very disappointed. And we wanna work for the city, but yet we're not taking care of the city's business. So all I have to say.
We have received, um, uh, correspondence from the Ohio Department of Commerce, Labor, Control, and from the, uh, High Division of Liquor for a potential license that, for the diamond, Black Diamond Kitchen at sixty-four West Washington. Just need to respond. We wanna have a meeting with them, or if we're just gonna go ahead and?
I have no objection. I'm fine with passing it along. I'm good as well. I, I maybe we, we forward, we back?
Who is it?
It's, uh, Abel Stone.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
She can't see it. No, she can't see it.
May I speak?
Yes.
Is it of the order?
Yes.
I would like to say that, uh, this is Jean Perry, five twenty-five Chestnut Street. And it is kinda sad that the contracts weren't approved tonight. But I also understand, and I think anyone can see what's going on here. When Mrs. Nguyen has not received her emails, she didn't receive the copy of the ordinances, she didn't receive the copy of the contracts. So she just wants a chance to read them over. I don't see anything wrong with that myself. If they wanna play the games of not letting her have the contracts, then she has to see the contracts. That's her prerogative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for the good of the order?
Any other citizen comments during, during, uh, good of the order?
I agree with Mr. Taylor. It's unfortunate that the council's not able to, um, approve the contracts tonight. Um, the council's had, um, numerous amounts of time to review them, and still we cannot approve them. It's honestly shameful. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The junior vice during council member right there.
Yeah, we're trying, president of the union.
Yes, sir.
There should be no reason they can't move on from this going on, because we'll have copies of the contract and try to move this thing along with a reasonable amount of time. Because we wanna know where we stand for the next three years.
I understand. And had I had it earlier, it would have been done by now. I will get it done by the end of this week. That's my plan, if I could get it today. And that was my plan.
That's an excuse. That's just, I'm sorry. It is.
I'm trying to be nice.
I understand, I'm.
He's not. He doesn't have.
It's not a game, because we, as council, have no ability to change or amend that contract. It's already been agreed upon. So there's absolutely nothing that we can do to change it. There's no reason why it couldn't have been passed, and she could still receive the copy of the contract. Thank you for the humility, Corey.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, anything else for the good of the order? No, okay. Or did you have something?
I just wanna adjourn.
The agenda to do interviews and appoint new council members.
I ain't making enough of this. Eighteen, seven dollars. Can you negotiate our contract?
Um, okay, folks, um, uh, we are gonna add the interviews for the council seat that's currently open. Uh, they were on the agenda at the last meeting, but we weren't able to complete them. Yes, they were. At any rate, um, it looks like we'll do it tonight. I had hoped that we could have a short meeting and everybody go home and enjoy the rest of the night. Um, so at this point, uh, I guess we will start with the interviews. I do want to say this to council members. This is not a place for you or anyone else to attack or belittle or any of those negative words, any one of the folks that have courageously stepped forward to put their name towards taking the seat on council. Just wanted to say that first off. Um, and one other thing, uh, in reading the charter, uh, in which is four point oh eight, under vacancy, it says nothing about conducting interviews. All it says is, council will choose someone within thirty days. If council fails to appoint someone within thirty days, then the president has fifteen days to appoint one of the folks that came forward. There's nothing in there that says interviews or anything else. I just wanted to put that out there in case some folks were not aware what the chapter actually says. All right.
I have a question. Um, so was precedent not, I'm sorry, am I not allowed to ask your questions? I mean, the discontent, I'm just asking. So has the previous council vacancies, was precedent not set that there were interviews? So it could be done, then, correct? We're allowed to do interviews?
All I stated was in the charter.
Okay.
Okay.
Just clarifying.
And it's in four point oh eight, under vacancies, you can read it yourself.
Four point oh three. So tomorrow would have been the thirtieth day, so we were.
Can we do the interviews, Mr. Clement?
We weren't.
Can we do?
Pardon me, four point oh three.
And so what is the process that we're going to do here, or do the interview? How long? I've asked this question for a long time. What is the process that we are going to be using?
Can you set a timer on your phone?
Yeah, sure.
For five minutes?
That's a long time.
I agree. We'll give you three minutes. How about that?
Are we gonna be allowed to ask questions to the candidates?
Uh, until the time runs out. If they are still speaking, then the time is out, we move forward.
Read the speech and shoot the question.
Yeah, that sounds good.
So do the candidates know what this process was leading up to this? You know, this, this is over the future.
Yeah, this is not the first time you've interviewed candidates. I mean, you just stood them up, you asked them to tell about themselves, and you got their questions.
I'm not gonna respond to that, but we've seen how this is, this is how this has gone in the past. So I guess this is a huge progress process. Thank you.
Wow, thank you. I appreciate that. Um, okay. So of the four candidates we have, I think we only have three here personally. Um, the fourth candidate is unfortunately in the hospital at this moment, was obviously not able to attend. Um, but he's still viable. If anyone wants to vote for him, you can. His name is Dan Sherman. Um, so why don't we start with you, Mr. Dunphy?
You're up.
You're starting.
Now?
Now.
Okay.
Um, twenty-five Langroth Drive, Anthony Dunphy. Um, you know, there was a campaign ran on transparency and for the people, correct? There was, there was a big selling point of someone's campaign, transparency for the people.
About you, sir? Is this about you? Because this is what they're supposed to be about.
This is what this is going, okay? What it is, is, is if you're for the people, the people will vote. Play it plain and simple. Three hundred and fifty votes is what I got the last election, would then more than enough in any other election to win a seat, period. Okay? Let's stop the fighting. Stop the arguing. Stop working around stuff that's not day-to-day opera, that's day-to-day operations. We're missing out on, uh, mayor's court funds. We're missing out on almost four months of mayor's courts fund. That's averages anywhere between four and six thousand dollars a month. Let's move forward with legislation that's gonna help the city. We've got all kinds of projects, and we're worried about fighting amongst each other, about who sent what email to who. If you get an email, you should send it to everybody. It should be copied and sent to everybody. You know, that stuff's gotta stop. We gotta move forward and stop the arguing and stop the poisoning. Because I think that there's, I think you're all good people. I think every one of you, you don't even have, some of you don't even know me. But you've been poisoned by bad information. That's what I honestly think. And I think if you sit down and actually have a one-on-one conversation with people and listen to them, actually listen, open your mind, listen, take it in, look and see what somebody says, and then put it into play and say, wow, that does kinda work. Well, that does kinda figure out. Maybe we can all work together and move the city forward, because we've got the money to. It's not like we're broke. We've been broke for years. We're not broke. And that was by making good decisions and working as a team. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
Um, whoever wants to go next is welcome to do so. I'll let y'all decide.
Opl, you wanna go?
My name is Opl Lawson. I'm living down eleven fifty-four Chestnut Street. I've been here for twenty-three years. I've seen this council perform good and seen it perform bad. I wanna be a new voice, because I hold no ties with nobody. The only possible tie is with Mr. Taylor that does some labor for me, because I no longer have his sons to help me out. I am a voice for Nelsonville. I see the good, I see the bad. I see the council up here running this city, when actually the cities need to get on the committees and do their part, instead of sitting back and just complaining of what's going on. Be a part of the solution, not a part of the problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Opl.
Uh, I think, Ms. Powell, I think you're the last one.
Did you wanna comment, Sue?
No.
You don't have, you don't have to if you don't want to. You got three minutes. I've talked to you before, so hurry.
Um, my name is Sue Powell. I live on East Washington Street in Nelsonville. Um, this is my hometown. Um, I've been gone, uh, two or three different times for, um, career opportunities. I've had twenty-four years in banking, and I spent twelve years across the hall here in the auditor's department as both, um, treasurer and auditor. Um, probably three or six months ago, I would never have dreamed that I was standing here and wanting an opportunity to serve my city. But I am here. Um, I want to be part of, I don't say turning around, I wanna be part of moving Nelsonville ahead. I see so many things that we should be talking about and taking care of. And instead, um, it's like Tony said, you're good people. And it's just like we're attacking one another. And we've gotta take a deep breath, somebody told me this years ago, take a deep breath, count to four, and you will calm down. And, um, what we have to do is recognize there's new people on council that, uh, need some direction occasionally, some help, um, not being attacked. You know, talking about the, uh, union contracts, I was involved in that. And we had, uh, the city manager, the city attorney, and the auditor were involved in the union contracts. They were discussed, I think, uh, Corey, you were probably on, uh, finance committee, but I think we brought him to finance committee. And then the city manager took him to, uh, actually, the city attorney wrote the, um, ordinances and took him to council. You're right, you know, you don't make any moves. All that has been negotiated when they're in, you're in the meetings. But people, we've got new people on that don't understand all the flow of the work. And we've got to be patient, and those kind of things, we've got to just keep bringing up until they're resolved. There's a way to help people, and then there's a way to turn people off and attack them. Let's change it around and help people. My three minutes are up.
Thank you, Sue.
Any nominations?
I'll nominate Mr. Dunphy.
I'll cycle.
Shall we do the other nomination?
Yeah, let's do the other nomination and then we'll call.
I'll nominate Ms. Powell.
I second. One over the red. Landmore? I'm making. Uh, I don't think so. Um, okay, for Mr. Dunphy. Uh, Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Clement?
Yes.
Mrs. Nguyen?
No.
No. Flowers?
No.
Mr. Booth?
Yes. Welcome back.
It only takes three?
No, it takes four. It does not say in the charter, it takes four, it takes a majority vote in the council. That's in the same section.
It takes four votes.
No, it doesn't.
It takes four votes.
Let's go on this.
Call roll for Ms. Powell.
How about Mr. Clement?
No.
Ms. Nguyen?
Yes.
Ms. Flowers?
Yes.
Booth?
No.
Taylor?
No.
It takes four votes, is my understanding.
To appoint a new council person.
It takes a majority.
For the, for the charter, I think, uh, it says majority.
Yeah, a majority of the council.
Right, the majority of council would be four. Not the majority that's present, the majority that sits on council.
Yeah, but make the distinction in there, in the charter between ordinances which say four and vacancies that does not say four in the majority of that. That's in the section, that's in the vacancy.
Four oh three?
I believe so.
Is that what it says? The charter says majority vote of council.
Exactly, which means-
And council has four here.
All council is seated.
It does not say that.
Yeah, four is a quorum.
Quorum, we have five here, we have a majority vote that passed the motion, which means the pass.
But it has to pass with a quorum. Which is four votes.
No, quorum doesn't.
But it doesn't say a quorum of the amount of people sitting with council at the time.
No, it does, that's right.
So if you read-
Majority of the people present.
Yes.
Is this being passed as an ordinance?
No, no, it's a motion.
But look under the charter, under vacancies, it says a majority of council.
It simply says, "The appointment shall be made by a majority vote of council." Majority vote is the seated council. And the majority vote of that would be four.
So if you see in four of four, it says quorum. Four members of council shall constitute quorum to transact business, the lesser member major, blah, blah, blah. Yeah, four of four says, "No people do business, we pass the motion by majority." By Robert Rorrie says that as well. We pass the motion.
Quorum on that particular section is talking about being able to have a meeting.
Yep, that's what quorum means.
Right, well, I know that. And that's what it's talking about, being able to have a meeting. It's not talking about appointing council.
We have a motion, we pass it. We have no people here that have a quorum, we rate the transact business, we did that. It's majority vote of, uh, we have new council member. Yes, Mr. Dunphy.
No.
Well, I think we need to check with our attorney to be sure, because this is a legal document that clearly needs interpretation. Because the way that it's written reads to me that it is council as a whole, just got one.
See, if you, if you read further, you'll see where ordinance is, like Mr. Volzini. I apologize if I mispronounced your name, sir.
No, you got it. You're good.
Yeah, thank you. It specifically calls out for, for passing ordinance. It does not say that in vacancies. Just what happened is you only have four people on council. That'd be, that's quorum, that's quorum, so you're allowed to conduct.
Why did majority vote come back? When nothing will be passed on councils and just two people on their court.
Was there two people? If all legal representation-
Same people, they must take by majority vote, so.
Yeah, you can't, you can't appoint a city council member by motion.
You cannot appoint a city council member by motion.
It has to be resolution ordinance. Asked, four point oh nine in the city charter.
Well, what's good, the president's never said, it's never, it's never happened.
That's because you haven't been following the charter.
The city charter.
Previous council not follow the charter. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm not getting paid.
By two attorneys.
Yeah. Okay. But I'm not being paid to do this.
Right.
I'm just sitting here, if you want, a- as somebody who's just sitting here, forms of action by council. The action of council shall be by ordinance or resolution. Action on all other matters of a temporary or informal nature may be taken by resolution. So all actions, all matters of a general or permanent nature in appointing a council member would be permanent, has to be done by resolution. That's what four point oh nine says, that's my reading of it.
Well, but action by council is appropriation of legislation. But when it comes to appointing firemen and, and, you know, police officers, those are all motion, those are not by ordinance. They're not by ordinance.
I'm reading, I'm just reading the charter. I, if, I mean, it, the words are pretty clear to me now. Maybe I'm wrong, it would only be the seventeenth time today, but-
Well, but-
The actions of council should be by ordinance or resolution, this is an action by council.
What does it read under vacancies?
Under vacancies, it says, is what you said, you know what it says. Vacancies of council shall be filled by appointment of a qualified person. So how do you do the appointment? Well, you do it by the action of council shall be by ordinance or resolution. I mean, maybe I'm wrong, I didn't do the research, I don't like being put on this spot, but if you ask me, that's what I'd say.
It also says a council, not the council. And this is a council.
But it has to be done by resolution. So I think it has to be done, yes, sir.
We've never done for thirty years, it's never been by resolution.
Okay, I, I understand that precedents, so you said precedents. Precedents never outstrips statutes. If you've never given a speeding ticket and get one, that's speeding.
Ever, if Congress is missing voters, do they still not pass the law?
We're not Congress, we're the city council here in Nelson. I don't care what Congress does, you're, you're asking me as, as an unpaid person.
Yeah, why are you speaking that?
Could they, you asked me.
I do have a question though, he is an attorney, I have a question though. So can council voice resolution? Or does that have to be a writing?
That's a question, probably. I mean, I don't know, you're asking, I have to look at it, I don't know. And again, I don't know if I'm right or not. I'm just, that's my, my reading of it is, you have to look at four point oh nine, it says has to be, anything council does has to be right by, of a permanent nature. Okay?
We went through this a couple summers ago.
Okay.
And, uh, because we had more than one vacant seat. And it was referred to as the council musical chair. Because somebody came on, somebody went off, two other people were on, and then it became a big legal thing. And there was actually a meeting in the back room before a regular council meeting involving a city attorney, another attorney, a couple council members, and other council members were omitted from that meeting. Yeah, it was, it was very, so-
So here's what I would like to do as president. Um, let me just say what I have to say, and then you can, no, you're hard to conceive. Uh, Mr. Volzini will be our city attorney beginning on Wednesday or Thursday, I believe.
That's unlucky enough to have a heart attack before.
So I would like to ask you, sir, to prepare a legal opinion regarding this issue, the appointment issue.
Okay.
If you could, I would very much appreciate that.
So may I finish?
Of course.
Thank you. Um, so that decision will be made before you appoint someone that you think may be appropriate?
Uh, just a moment. I'm gonna wait on his decision.
That's, that's my question.
Yes.
Okay.
That is why I asked.
That's the way we don't run into what we did a couple summers ago.
That is why I asked him for the opinion.
Okay, with you, Tony. Oh, I'm fine with that. Okay, they'll be lovers. Is that okay with you, Sue?
Well, at least I got something easy and non-congressional.
You're very optimistic.
Um-
So are we, so what are we doing right now?
Let's adjourn, I'd love to adjourn.
One second.
Dean?
Yes.
I'd love to adjourn the meeting.
Ms. Flowers?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
I will just pass this information along at the next meeting, since everybody's very concerned.
Good night. Good night.